According to my official clock, it's 6:00 PM and we'll go ahead and I'll ask that we stand for invocation and pledge of allegiance before we officially open the meeting. So we'll bow on an attitude of prayer. Gracious heavenly father, thank you once again for this beautiful day in Washington County. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, to serve others throughout our community. Tonight, we pray for the mayor and the council and the citizens of Boonsborough for their well-being. And lord, we just pray that we collaborate and work together to, for the betterment of the citizens. Thank you for this time. May we honor and praise you for all that's said and done, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Bible of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, officially call our meeting to order. And first thing on the agenda is the town of Boonsborough leaders reports and comments. So mayor, you're up.
You gonna bring Drew up with you?
Yeah.
This is your ambush.
He's our computer. He's up on all, all the comments. First of all, I'd like to thank the commissioners for taking time out of your busy schedule and bring all your staff with you. This is great. Meet with you all once a year. I also like to thank you for all your help and support to you giving the town of Boonsborough with yours with our reservoir and with our Chase Six and other projects which you all have been very, very helpful with. And now I'm going to turn it over to Drew. He has a couple ideas for you all. Good, thank you.
One of the things where I came to look here at the town of Boonsborough, there were two projects that they asked were their top priority and you all are well aware of them. That is the reservoir project for obvious reasons. And the Chase Six Boulevard Extended. The Chase Boulevard Extended will certainly improve major traffic problems that currently exist right now, right there on Mapleville Road. So one of the things that you may be aware of is where Mapleville Road comes into Boonsborough on that angle. All the traffic coming down Halter's Forty is coming all the way to that intersection and the buses are trying to make that turn. When this section goes through, when Chase Six gets extended and comes into the school parking lot, that is going to make a direct shot. So all that traffic will have the ability to relieve and go there. And it will help relieve that congestion that's at Mapleville and Main Street right there. So this project is really important. The developer is working with the town of Boonsborough on this. Jim Draper is the developer. He's paying for all of the costs associated with getting the road across there. Project is moving forward. It's actually at state highway. They've approved all the geometrics, all the stormwater management. They're just waiting on the striping to get approved. And once that gets approved in the right away plat. Soon as that's done, we're going to be able to bid this, bid this project. As it relates to the county, you guys have been gracious enough to give the town a lot of money towards this project because it's going to solve a lot of problems within the county. But on top of that, we have that land swap. And you all remember that the board of ed cannot release property. It has to release it back to the, sort of this stage of things. You all went through this about a year or two ago when you came up with MOU with all the property owners. All I'm asking and the only thing the town's asking for right now from the county commissioners is a point of contact at the county. Because as soon as those final plaques get approved by state highway, we can start doing the land swaps. And this is really kind of outside the norm.
Hesitant for wholesome years again.
But I'm not sure who at your county I should begin contacting. Again, the, the issue is about a year or two old. But it's all going to come to fruition. And I know there's a lot of reviews and things that have to happen and the state board of education has to sign off on it. So there's a bunch of hurdles. You've all done them before, but it's just, who do we contact and who, who would be the best person?
I can answer that question. So Todd Moser, who is here with us tonight, he would be your point of contact. He handles all of our estate management and our land management. So hopefully he has a card with him tonight that he can give to you. And just to add a figure to the amount that you had mentioned that the board approved $520,000 from capital reserves towards this particular project. So I just wanted to put another two.
And Drew, the timeline on this, is there any way possible it can be completed before all the traffic in, in September for school to start? Or is that not feasible?
We're trying. The answer is, had we gotten approval on the plans a month or two ago, I would say it was a shot to dark. You know, it was a shot, but it would have been close. Now that we don't have the reviews yet and we've got to bid the project, there's no way it's going to time in. So that being said, doesn't mean we're not going to do it. Again, there's not a lot of utility work there. So there's a lot that can be done. There's a lot of those kind of issues and let's just try to figure out what we can get done the fastest and best.
Yeah, with, with student drivers and school buses and traffic mitigation, I'm sure adds a lot to the complexity.
It does, but let's not forget that that whole section up there, that first section, that developer has to build that. So we can coordinate that off from the other areas and at least get that road extension down there as close as we can safely before we actually tie in the Mapleville Road. It's going to be a lot of coordination with the board of education. Once we get the bids, once we know what the price is, once we know what our timeframes are, we'll be able to better sit down and try to map some of those things out a little bit better.
We were told two months ago it'd be two weeks and we're still waiting from state highway. Every time you call up there, you get an answering machine. Now they won't even answer you because they know what we're calling for. So if y'all have any contacts, we appreciate it.
Can the delegation help push with that, Annie?
I'm not sure. I can reach out. I can reach out to them.
Yeah, that's probably what I would do. Get, start with the delegation in there. What's that committee Jeff that you, aren't you?
Well, I'm on the TAC committee. We can, transportation advisory committee meets once a month. We can certainly get on the agenda there and you have some state officials that's on that committee that I can.
Just anything, anything when you all come across your state highway representative, anything when you run into somebody, a district engineer or something, anything to get the review done because that, that's really what's holding us up. There are so many things that have to happen. We have to create the parcels so that we can submit those for the subdivision, through the state board of public works, which then has, there's a whole series of things. And so, uh, once, once the dam breaks free, there's going to be a lot of things to happen. So there's not a lot going on with the project now, but there is going to be a whole lot going on the next couple of months. The second project is the reservoir. We've talked about the reservoir. You all have also been very gracious in helping the town with the reservoir. The town's reservoir is being rebuilt. It is currently an in-ground reservoir. And we are going to be building a concrete tank enclosure. And this is going to be up on Boonsborough Mountain Road just outside of the town boundary. So this is under the jurisdiction of Washington County. So we did submit plans to Washington County for review. If you look here, this is the existing reservoir. It's a covered, it's got liners on the inside, liner on the top. Been there since 1952, 1954. And what we're going to be doing is we're going to be building a brand new tank next to it. That's this smaller one over here. Because we can't take the reservoir offline. It is the primary source of fire flow protection for the downtown and the schools. So we cannot take the reservoir offline. It's basically a water tank. So what the design engineers with and Rec Card and Associates WR did, they said, what we're going to do is build the tank size that you need, a dual tank, so you can take one side down, clean it, et cetera. Build you this, put all the lines in and then on one day, cut the pipes over and you're good to go. So this will be a new tank that will be up there. Uh, there's no buildings or anything. There is a mechanical room that's a part of the tank with all the valving and all the different things. We will be running a new 12-inch water line down Boonsborough Mountain Road. So we will be filing the necessary forms with the county to do that. Based on the equipment that we've got to haul up there and the concrete we're hauling up there and the pipe that's going down the road, you're going to get a nice section of Boonsborough Mountain Road. You're welcome then.
Okay, we like it.
We're going to tear the heck out of the brush.
How are you losing water now? Are you still losing water?
By 30% or more, you're saying?
We had, we had divers about six months ago that helped stem the flow and, and slow it. But again, it's a Band-Aid. It's, it's, you know, literally the guy in the dyke with his finger. It's just, it's not going to hold.
Well, to help create the sense of urgency, what percent are you in danger now? There you go. So there's a sense of urgency for this to happen now.
So, and, and the good news is we got the MDE permit, so we're ready to go. So the council at Monday night, they, uh, motioned to go forward with bidding. So we're going to be bidding the project. We've got a month before we get the bids in. And we hope to have all the permits in hand. One of those permits in hands is what they get Washington.
What's the timeframe when getting this completed? I mean, as of today?
500 days.
500 days?
About a year and a half, a little shorter.
Is there, is there a risk factor of catastrophic failure in that time? Have you?
I don't think so. Because they're not going to be digging or doing anything around the existing reservoir. That's kind of the whole point of why they're doing it the way they are. They don't want to mess with it. Let it be. Let's get the new one built and then we go forward. So on the permit side, um, from Washington County, there's a couple of things you've got for, we've got to comply with and some other things. Uh, we did get a couple of comments back, some preliminary comebacks back from the county about setbacks. And I'm not sure who the reviewer was or if they're aware of all the sections of the county code. But I kind of think this sort of falls under essential equipment utilities, which doesn't need zoning review. That's just something that maybe the planner review should look at. Just talking about the building or the tank being too close to the side yard setback. Well, it's not a building. It's a tank and it's a utility room. And it is close to the property line. It's about 20 feet away. But by the same token, this is an essential piece of utility and equipment and it's exempt from all zoning, not from fro, not from stormwater management, but from the typical zoning.
Okay, so I do know that we provided comments back in April to your consultant. Um, and we did receive the resubmission of your reservoir project and plan on May the 28th. So the planning department is the lead on that. We do have a representative from the planning department here now. So they, um, are reviewing your comments and the resubmitted plan this month. And hopefully, um, your consultant addressed all of the questions that they had. Um, I wasn't aware that there was a potential issue with setbacks, but we do have Jill here. Um, she may be able to just review on that or if she doesn't have information on that, she can just, you know, let you know that.
And I'm not asking for an answer tonight. It's just one of those things that it kind of popped up and it, I was just kind of curious. Being a public utility, I, you're usually exempt from a lot of the zoning regulations because you're a public utility. I mean, you, you have to have water, you have to have sewer, you have to have those things. There's also some other things and that also would exempt us from the land sweeping and those kind of requirements because of the piping that's around. And the sheplers who are the adjacent property owners, uh, I've met with them on three different occasions. They're aware of it. We already made some modifications to the plans for some runoff concerns that they had. So they're aware of the project and they've been neighbors, I don't know how long, however, 20 years, something like that.
Okay. Well, Jill is here, so she's making note of that. We'll, we'll make sure that we check into it for you and get back to you. Um, and just for the public's awareness, the board has committed $1 million from capital reserves towards this particular project. Haven't distributed it yet, but we, we have committed a million dollars towards the project for you.
That's awesome. A million that we already have or another million?
It has not been distributed to you yet.
The 1 million has already been delivered. I checked to you. So that's the additional money.
That would be very nice.
Oh, maybe, maybe Kelsey was mistaken then. So I'll just double check as far as it is.
You already cashed it in your hair. Don't worry about it.
Already spent it.
I apologize for that.
That's okay. Yeah, those hand-delivered checkbooks. And we appreciate that. But if you want to give us another thing, we won't turn it down.
Definitely send it on the rest.
Absolutely. That's all you got?
Those were the two projects.
Sounds good. The only other thing I have, and, uh, I know you all have to know tires over it, but it's just a suggestion to you. The problem with the schools and the traffic, it, it's horrendous. My question is, why can't the schools go back to the way it was when we went to school? School bus kids got on the buses 10 minutes early dismissal and then you're in town and you're riding, uh, students left after that. That way it gets all the bus traffic out before the other kids get in their old nobils and helps deviate some of the traffic jam. I know there's a lot more students now than what it was when we went to high school. But that just seems like that would help some of the problems with backups and everything at schools. And I, I know you.
Have you raised the issue with them?
Uh, I've said something to the Boonsborough High School principal in the comment I got back. I can't make teachers work later.
10 minutes earlier isn't working later.
That's the answer I got. Yeah. But I will bring it to the superintendent of the school.
And the school board maybe.
Uh, well, I don't know what I'm allowed to go to school for meetings or not. Or the Chase Six. I'll tell you all confidential what happened. Some, some of the.
Your troublemaker you.
I can certainly reach out to Dr. Savine and relay your concerns to her.
Appreciate that. That's all we have. You all got anything for us?
Council members?
No, we appreciate all the help you're giving us. We would gladly take any extra money you have for infrastructure in the county to help us with our situation, you know. Really trying to plug, get that working and ready and up and.
I did receive another request, uh, because we did indicate we have some additional ARPA funds to allocate. Uh, we are meeting with our ARPA review committee next week. We do plan to have some decisions made. We received requests from three towns. So we will have it on the agenda in July for potential approval. I, I don't know how much it'll be. We only have about $640,000 total, um, to, left over to distribute. So it won't be a lot of money, but it may be some money. So we'll, we'll have that on in July.
And just to echo also what Mary Lee and Mayor Long said, that the reservoir started out at 4.1 million. And with all the delays and post pandemic, the projections are somewhere and we don't know what's going to end, $11 million. So we've been working diligently behind the scenes. Um, I know it seems like we always ask, but it's only because, um, the burden is so high now, uh, with the cost. Um, we're just trying to make sure that the funding is in place so that when we're ready to dig dirt, we can just move full steam. So any additional funding would be greatly appreciated by ten. But we have also checked other avenues too. So thanks for all the good places. So once we get the equitable and the permits, we're going, whether we got the money or not, but we got places to get them.
Okay.
Not to, we need to work.
And your choice.
Hey, just echo whatever one else has said really, to appreciate all the help you all give us very much. And we hope to strive for these bids come in in the $10 million range. Less would be nice, but we may be expecting, I've heard 12 to 15. So if it gets to 15 million, we'll have another discussion about how we're going to pursue them. So thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you again.
Thank you. So.
Just like to say thank you for your inmate, but then if you said that I work with Doug LeVine, like, you know, it's a week, super good guy and helps out, helps us down a lot. He's talking that power of key of full-time 40s. We really appreciate it.
Wonderful. Your current police protection good and, and all that?
We're working on that.
Great.
We're working on that.
Loss of cabinet really hurt.
It's what I was wondering. Yeah. Yeah, that was a shock. Yes, tough call. There's no other town council comments. I'm going to turn it back to the commissioners and commissioners reports and comments. You want to go first?
Well, thank you, President Parr. It's always good to be here. I like participating in the parade and dropping by the library and seeing friends here and stopping and seeing some of the shops. I just had a couple of questions for whoever might want to answer it. Do you have any input on where you're at with volunteer fire and EMS and any challenges in that arena at all that you want to highlight to us, if, if any? And then, but from the town perspective. And then, um, you know, the house of progress on the museum coming along.
I know the ambulance company is, uh, in the process of doing some repairs and expansion out there. I've helped do a dirt developer on some ground to build a fire company and ambulance and police station, uh, combination. But due to circumstances with fire company and the ambulance company, uh, they don't seem to want to come together and work, right Drew?
So, uh, we, we're at a standstill on that right now. We were approached by one of the main developments, the TTK development, which is about 300 acres on basically the west side of the town that comes off of Lappins Road and comes down to Monroe. And we had talked to them and they had talked about giving a, anywhere between a five and a six acre site for a joint ambulance, fire company, town police force item. We had enormous difficulty trying to get cooperation between the two. Uh, we are still trying. But it's, it's been, it's been difficult. Either way, uh, we are updating our comprehensive plan and we are identifying a facility, a new facility for both in the comprehensive plan to at least identify where, because when we start looking at the road networks and where the roads are going to be, we also want to be looking closely at where are we putting our response and our, our emergency response vehicles. Because sticking them on Main Street right now is a bad idea. It's just got too much congestion until we get some of the collector roads built around, maybe having one of those emergency services out on that collector road so they can get to some of these more southern parts. One thing I did not realize until I came to work here in Boonsborough, I did not realize how many calls for service go south county that come out of here. I mean, literally, I couldn't believe how much I heard the ambulance running when I started working here. It's all day long. So there, there's a, there's a demand and Boonsborough is part of that demand, but I know a lot of it is support going to the Southern part of the county. And you, it's just good to hear it running like that. As far as the museum, which one? The road museum or? Boss. We have two. Boss. Boss. Just had a meeting with them today. Uh, Chuck came in to see me. Assistant mayor was there. Uh, they're moving forward with some plans. They're just, they came in to find out what the requirements were. Hallelujah. Someone actually came in and actu- actually asked what the process was before they started it. So he knows he has to file a site plan. He knows once he gets a site plan, then he can get his zoning certificate and he can apply for all the plumbing and electrical permits that he needs. And he was doing his due diligence. So it was very nice to talk.
Good. Okay. Thank you. That's all I.
Randy?
Hey, good evening. Uh, glad I could be here. Uh, this is usually our easy night and you kept it that way. You kept it that way. Oh yeah, as far as mine. What can I say? Now, uh, the reservoir would definitely be a priority for me. I, I don't think people, some people don't understand how important that's going to be, losing that kind of water. And, you know, I'm on your side on that. I don't know what anything in reason we can do. I'm sure commissioners will help if we can do it. Uh, it's just, uh, it's just amazing what inflation has done to all of our projects. You know, it's, we've been preaching about that how long, Jeff? I mean, just inflation is, I mean, that figure is astounding to me. Four to five million to 12 million, maybe, or 11 or whatever.
But didn't you use the high-tech technology of using a volleyball to plug the leak?
Uh, at first.
$13 million volleyball. Soccer ball. Thanks for the correction.
Soccer ball. That's, that works.
You can't make this up.
But they've worked for a few days, but Greg, uh, went through some, uh,
Maybe a bowling ball.
Fully inflated too.
You know, and then divers were gracious enough to come help you. I was here for a couple of them. So, uh, you know, I just, just appreciate, appreciate staff being here. We have more staff than anybody. We got, the county is here tonight. So, yeah, I mean, they're here. So. And, uh, how's the, I only one question I have. I'm just curious. Police force, you got, do you have people hired that you need?
Uh, well, we, uh, we have one officer going through the academy.
Okay.
Right now, getting ready next week to hold the interviews for the chief of police. And we do have a, another retiring officer that's, uh, coming to workforce in July. So hopefully by middle of July, we're going to be back up to self again. Uh, I, I don't know where this is improper to say or not, but M-TAC has been a very, very good blessing to help us out. Uh, they're a good group, good organization, new coverage, helps us on our downtime. They're, they're doing a great job.
Yeah, yeah, they are nice. I mean, I, I got off, I don't know how, but his printer broke or something. I'd have gone to 40 or 50, contributed to your coffers. But, uh, no, they're very professional. Uh, I think you got a lot going for you there. I mean, I don't, I don't have anything else. Just, you know, thank you guys. It's been, you're always very pleasant and it's, it's, it is a really a joy to come here to this meeting.
Appreciate you coming down. We appreciate it and you guys do for us. And thank you.
Mr. Klein?
Well, this is just not my easy night. This is one of my favorite nights in Boonsborough. It's one of my favorite towns. How you like that?
We see you a lot.
Yes, indeed.
Every function we have, Jeff's here.
I want to commend you on your carnival, not just the selection of the bands, but the volunteer spirit, the atmosphere of small town America was in this town. The Dunn's River Band, uh, the Great Train Robbery, uh, the cruisers. And one of the highlights of the carnival was the Reagan years having the Bispa students up there playing and singing. And of course I'm always taking pictures, but I'm looking at the crowd and I'm seeing people enjoy this small community. So kudos to all the volunteers and everyone that put that carnival together for those, what, nine nights? Is it nine straight nights? And also was down here Sunday night to watch the South Mountain Jam with Jeff Talton and two Maryland Hall of Famers performers, Van Schau and Mike Blush Ball. And I would say Jeff Talton will be another Hall of Fame member, but, uh, on earlier, before I came in, your concert series, another tribute to you wanting to show off your town and market this as the place to be in Washington County, a small town in America. The bands and the atmosphere of your people, you should be recognized and applauded for that type of attitude, atmosphere that you're having here. So I thank you for that.
The gentleman from Reagan years told me.
And he works at, he's teacher Bispa.
Looking out over the crowd, he said, I think this is the largest crowd we've ever played inside.
Yes, indeed. And the kids were super.
You can see back through the grass. When you stood up, they had a little power failure. We thought it was on our end, but it wasn't. It was on their end. And when you looked out at that stage, all you saw was wall to wall people back through that old carnival grass.
And one other thing I want to, I also attended an award ceremony about chamber of commerce for the first responders. And I want to thank all the first responders that are involved in that. But, um, Mary Jane Blinkenstaff, Blinkenstaff was recognized for, I think she retired from the county in her years of service at the Boonsborough AMS. I understand she's kind of telling off her commitment, volunteerism spirit, but she put a lot of hard working time into your AMS company. So tonight I will officially, uh, recognize her for her efforts in receiving that award. Yeah, yes, indeed. Um, and then just in closing, uh, the reservoir is a priority for me. We have to have that fixed before the price accelerates. So thank you for everything.
As I says on the, I, I think recognize that. You recognize, uh, the town or the things we do and, and I understand it. And I want everyone to know, we have the most tremendous volunteers around. We have commissions. We have a large commission that's been dealing.
Your economic development commission is fantastic.
Right now, our, our bottom commission is out there running the, uh, the farmers market. Stop by if you have time.
10th year.
Great. And, uh, so.
Right. And uh, so we, we were, we just, we have got a tremendous amount of, of volunteers uh, and activists in this town that, that
Thank you for adding that.
What is the town population? Just curious to know.
4,800. Oh, 4,800, 4,800.
4,800. I'm certainly not going to challenge the uh, authenticity of my fellow commissioners and their excitement to be here, but I can tell you mine outrumps theirs. Uh, I go.
You lived here, didn't you?
I lived here, I did. You know, just for the record, I'm at home. I feel uh, absolutely wonderful being here. Uh, you know, I've got fond memories from after being kicked out of the second grade at Beaver Creek. I'll tell you more about that story, but uh, so from the third grade through uh, uh, the 12th grade, I was here on campus every day and spent a lot of time in uh, not only the campus, but downtown Boonsboro and, and uh, shortly thereafter, I got married and Howard and Carol were my neighbors up here on 300 block of uh, St. Paul Street. And as the story goes, they had a young son, he was less than a year old, and I try, I think I tried to kill him. Um, I was mowing grass. It was part of my job to mow the grass and, and I heard a commotion coming out of the mower, and I looked up and I saw this rock flying, went through their back picture window, and it landed on the floor uh, very close to where the son was playing. And uh, so uh,
He was watching you. Oh, Carol said, I was at home.
And uh, so uh,
He, he just came down off to the couch, run and tell her, John's mowing, John's mowing, and bang.
So we go way back, and we got some good stories, and we, we, you know, love the Red Bird Restaurant on Sunday mornings. That's a favorite motorcycle ride. So the uh, again, it's, it's wonderful to be here, and Howard knows that uh, at any time, uh, we communicate and reach out and and uh, try to help each other. And without question, the, the reservoir is top priority. The other, the other thing I want to add is, um, I know there's been some talk around town about some type of memorial for, in memory of Coach Scott, who was probably the best teacher I ever had in school. And uh, very well thought of in this community. And I think there's been some, maybe some angst or pushback from the school board and um, again, I don't know where that stands, but I'm, I'm a huge fan of trying.
We did have a uh, street change, Scott's garage, you know.
But. Changed the street name.
If we wanted to change the name, they wouldn't do it. But they did put a plaque up.
But wasn't Tony Mendez talking about some type of bronze statue or something up at the school grounds? And I don't and I don't know if that, I don't know if that has fizzled or um, where that stands. I thought maybe the.
There's somebody trying to get rid of the uh, totem pole.
No, really. Jeez.
They want to bait into a bench. Oh, Lord.
So, sorry.
I'm personally against that totem pole. It's part of our.
If, if you need a diver's back, you see who's sitting behind you, don't you? Holy, he's your diver connection.
We'll, we'll send old lady down.
That, that.
I know.
That totem pole was
Yeah.
history.
Not because he's here always very helpful to the town. I would say that he wasn't here.
Yeah, you would.
Little history, the totem pole was on every yearbook from the, from the early 60s on.
And
front page.
The chief to where your head was too.
You get them early.
Again, thank you.
One other thing I'd like to thank for is your emergency services. Uh, I get emails constantly from Cody. That way it get allows me to keep sending them to Greg, Greg's prepared for what kind of, kind of weather's coming, especially in the wintertime. Uh, and of course, last week we got the note stuff, pull a native. Unfortunately, I missed on speed. But uh, thank you. Excellent, excellent.
Okay, there's no other comments? It's now open for citizens' participation? Any, anyone here that?
Is there any citizens here?
Other, other than staff and.
On behalf of council, but um, I know it was brought up at one point by the new treasurer, county treasurer, about helping the town let don't think proper procedure, whatever reason it fizzles. And I personally think that would be an advantageous help to the small towns. Um, you know, it's time consuming, the software to keep track of that is kind of expensive. This generation of people like to pay bills online, they like to access it online, that, you know, paper billing and mailing thing. Um, I don't think that the county should do it for free. Um, but I do think there could be some kind of a mutual study. I think there's maybe like 18 counties that out of the 23 or 24 that do that. Um, four municipalities. I, I know Boonsboro is kind of a little bit big enough that we actually did investments in software to track it things, but again, it, you know, it's a cost at the time. But I know Sharp's for Kittyville kind of do it by hand, you, you know, and it's those areas grow too. It's a little more accurate. It might, you know, be some synergy there to have one collection place, people mailing tax one place. And just, I don't know, maybe somebody would want to investigate the cost or how much. I know you don't want to hire more staff, or I know.
I think we already did.
Yeah, I don't think there's any support amongst the board. You must be talking to Matt Breeding about that, but some of the information that the other town said was not accurate from what, from his presentation, and I think showed Gordon has already responded to that, that it's.
Okay. I know, I know when I talked to Todd Hershey about it, you know, years ago.
Yeah.
He said he didn't think it was beneficial unless everybody was on board. And I don't know that, I know that that's hard, and I didn't know whether you know, like a, a test program, a pilot program where you did it for one or two towns and see if it worked, it didn't work. You know, it's for others to do it or not. Just that I personally, just from having helped and working in accounting and bookwork, know what's involved in, you know, thinking it would be.
It, it wouldn't eliminate your need to reconcile the tax rolls um, and the tax bills as well as any payments coming in. So it wouldn't eliminate your need to do, to do that work as well.
Well, that's what I thought it would. I thought they would.
I was at the city of Frederick when they actually implemented it. Uh, the county took over uh, processing the tax bills for the city of Hagerstown, and we still, it was me. It was one of my very first positions early in my career. Uh, I still had to reconcile the tax rolls. I still had to process payments. I still had to.
Now, see, that's what I think we're talking different things, because the county does do our tax bills now. We were talking about them then, doing the whole rolls.
Right.
Sales came.
Right.
They didn't have to wait for towns.
I still had to reconcile everything.
Okay.
Yeah, there was still the need for that to happen.
You would just get a.
Well, you don't, I mean, are, are you going to trust someone else with reconciling your tax roll?
Yeah, it's all the town.
We still, we still.
There'd be no other way. I mean, if there's like payments, be no other way to.
Yep, we, we still reconciled it. Um, we had to attach liens, we had to process abatements, we had to look through it for uh, pre-annexation agreements and things like that. So, so I had a lot of work to do with it.
I might make one, one comment with respect to Commissioner Wagner. When you ask about the town commitment for reservoir, you said 500 days. Uh, uh, I've been known as the pessimist, but I like to refer to it as the realist. My boss used to come to me and he'd say, well, how long will that take, Eric? And I, I'd say 500 days. He'd say, great, see you in 500 days. I, no sir. It'll take me 300 days to get to it. So the COVID situation and the workforce, I not only have the financial concern, I have the concern of when are we really going to get to it? Is that fair, Drew? Uh, I mean, when, when we have this contract and it's awarded, I don't expect to see this thing in 500 days. So, and, and that's a.
Inside the contract, won't they have bonuses and incentives for early completion and penalties for going beyond? Is that how the contract works? So the contractor would be behoove to do it timely, but those type of penalties are incentives. So that would help.
But again, I'm, I'm.
I get it.
And still, still in citizens' participation? Anyone else? County staff? Any comments? Appreciate.
Greg, would you want to introduce the staff that you have, we have here to recognize them? Do you do that? Yeah, yeah, but how could you in charge of it? Jane was hiding. Yeah. Stacy. Yeah, Derek could do it.
You want me to do it?
Sure.
Okay, so we have uh, Freddie Flipp here, who's our direct, um, interim director of emergency management. He's the one who's sending you the email. Of course, we have Ollie Griffin here. He is our volunteer fire coordinator. Uh, we have Michelle Greby here, who's the executive assistant to the county administrator. Jonathan Horowitz, who is their director of business and economic development. Uh, I mean, you've probably seen him quite regularly. But Jill Baker, our director of planning and inspection, uh, planning and zoning, sorry. And then Greg, the director of permits and inspection. So there's really inspections. Um, and then in the back, we have Sage Rao, who is our director of highways. And we have Todd Moser, who is our real estate uh, director. And Rachel, oh, sorry, we have Danielle over here, Danielle Weaver, who is our director of public relations and marketing. And then over here, we have Rachel Green, who's our director. Rachel Sauter, I'm sorry. Who's our director of grants management. Oh, most, most on. And, and just on behalf of the county, I'd like to thank you for uh, inviting us here and having us here to have these discussions. It's always a pleasure talking with you. Um, I have a really good rapport with Mr. Roll. Anything bad about our conversations, thank you for everything.
I hear you.
Always very helpful. Always cordial and inviting. Appreciate. So, you know.
Any others?
Another staff member right down there on the end too.
County attorney?
He's got a nameplate. He's got a nameplate.
Well, if there's no other comments, uh, looking for a motion for adjournment?
To adjourn.
Second?
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
If you want to do a group picture, I'm happy to take it. I don't know if that's too much.